All right, call this meeting to order. Seven P M. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people for which it stands, to the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, welcome, welcome, welcome. We will start with the consent agenda, which will be the agenda for tonight as well as the meeting minutes from last month's meeting, October the fifteenth of two thousand twenty-four. Anybody have any comments on tonight's agenda, changes to tonight's agenda or last week, last month's meeting minutes?
What do you say?
Without, without anybody speaking up, a, a motion to approve tonight's agenda as well as the meeting minutes from October fifteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as well as the meeting minutes of October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda and the meeting minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie. Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This would be a time in which citizens can address the planning commission on any business other than items listed on tonight's agenda. If you do have comments in regards to tonight's agenda items, we ask that you hold those comments till later in the evening when we open up for citizen comments. Again, that being said, anybody with comments in regards to anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. Nothing there, we'll close the citizen comments. The next thing on the agenda is communications. No communication items listed. Karen, anything to add there? Put it there. Okay. Next thing on the agenda would be a public hearing. So we will, I will need a, a public hearing for the special land use at nine one six six Marine City Highway for a used car sales. Mr. Mark A. Williams would be the applicant. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm making a mo-
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm making a motion to open a public hearing for special land use nine one six six Marine Highway. Used car sales.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie. Okay, Mr. Williams. Step on up.
Hello everyone.
Welcome.
So last time I was here, there was a few requirements that you guys wanted me to get done, and I think I missed that I got those requirements.
All right. So... For anybody that wasn't here last time, Mark, why don't you give us a quick summary of, of what you're looking to do there? And what were the, the things that you updated on your site plan to, to become compliant with the requests?
Okay, so the address nine one six six Marine City Highway is Mark's Auto Service. It's the business my dad has. I am filing a special land use to have a used car license. As stated, it will be in the back. This isn't going to be high traffic. It's going to be very slow. It's by appointment as well. It's not like open doors like my father has where it's a very high traffic area. So at the time when I was here last month, the dumpster that we have wasn't up to code. It had to have concrete. It had to be fenced in with a gate. There was specifics in the email or the overview when I was in here last time of things that I had to complete. Also, there was a green belt that needed more trees as well. So I, I put three pine trees in. I concreted and I fenced in as well. And I'm, that's it.
So did you, did you pull permit for all the footings and all that stuff?
So at the time, I had made a mistake. I didn't realize the process. I did not pull permit. I would like to pay for the permit. I tried to, I'm not very thankful I took those pictures for the, the building inspector because I had, well, I, I did a lot of research on the rat wall and whatnot prior to doing that. But with the process of going through this, I had no idea what I was doing, and I've learned a lot.
Okay. Karen, want to do your notes on this?
Yeah, so again, we had a preliminary discussion about the special land use at the last meeting. The applicant had updated their site plan. You know, this is a special land use that is allowed in the industrial district. The site does meet the district regulations for lot area setbacks. There's enough off-street parking spaces. There's off-street loading. Landscaping has been updated to meet the requirements for the industrial district. And the only outstanding item I had was, was some details on the trash enclosure. And although the trash enclosure is now an as-built according to photographs, it does look like it answers some of those questions. Obviously, a building permit and verification from the building official would be needed to file that aspect out. But aside from that, the, as long as the planning commission finds that it meets the criteria for special land use, I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Karen. So... Trying to understand how the two businesses are gonna coexist on the same property. So your, your business models have, feel like you told us last time, is more internet-based, right? So like this isn't, your goal isn't, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but your goal isn't a, a used car lot like on, on Grashit Mount Clemens, where you got thirty or forty cars and they all got stickers in the windows and they're all displayed out for everybody to come see, or is that your plan? Like what?
I don't plan on putting flags out by the road and all that stuff. That's something we can talk about right now as well, too. I don't want to go over everything. I need to miss to try and open up my own place eventually. My dad has, you know, is allowing me to take advantage of, you know, what he has built already. And, you know, if possible financially and for whatever other reasons may be, I think that would be the best approach for me starting out. But I know that there is another business there already. It's very busy. You know, honestly, if, if we weren't as close as we were and if it was another random person, I wouldn't ever see it working. But we, we always work together. I've always been around there. And, you know, it's very clear that I also need to stay out of his way because his business is the priority there. But he, he will allow me to try and, you know, start mine. But that's why I wanted to make a point to say that it's by appointment. The cars that I do have listed, if it's five to ten cars, when somebody is coming out to buy a car, it's not every day. And when they do, they usually do buy them. I've talked with, you know, I've sold previous ones in the past, but it, it's low traffic compared to what he has going through there right now. And I know other dealerships are not low traffic, and that's what you're asking me. But I do not plan on having it be like that at all. And if it were to get to that point where I am feeling that excited, I would be looking for another building where I can accomplish all of those goals to have it look, you know, pretty from the road and have all the cars showing and whatnot.
So what do you, how much space do you think your father's business can afford to give to your business? Does that make sense, or?
As far as space goes, you know, I, I would, I would have to ask him that. I feel like-
Good thing he's here.
Yeah. I would ask him that.
I mean, are we talking space for two cars, five cars, ten cars? Like, just a rough estimate.
Five to ten vehicles. The state minimum says they require at least a spot for ten vehicles. But I don't, you know, I, I plan to have five to ten vehicles there. And I had mentioned before that originally I wanted to show I had parking in the back. There is room back there, but it's not on my site plan. I usually keep my cars far in the back next to the woods and the trees where they're out of his hair. And, you know, when I sell my cars, I'm very honest with people and I, and I inspect vehicles. And I have a demeanor where as, you know, you don't have to buy my product if you don't want to. So I might have a nice car, and even though it's all the way in the back, I am proud to still show that vehicle, even though I may not have all the nice things around it. That's all I need at the time.
So most of the sales process is conducted like over the phone via the internet?
Marketplace is outstanding, yes.
And so you're just using the space at, at this facility to complete the transaction?
Correct, yes.
So your advertising mostly is online?
Yes, it is online. State's requirement, my sign will have to be visible from the road. It does have structure right there now. And I said last time there was an open spot for it, so I will have a sign there. And, but other than that, yeah, everything's in the back. So, and with the state, I still don't know.
Which we will draw a permit for.
Yes. Yes. And, you know, as far as the state, I, I may not even get approved by the state, you know, because we use the same driveway. We have the same business store. I, I'm trying to do it if I can. I know there is a, a couple of unusual things going on, but I hope that, you know, I'll, I'll still be able to get approved.
Yeah, I understand that the, the state makes it difficult for someone like yourself to go to, to obtain it. You want, you, last time you were here, you spoke about a dealer license, so you could go to auctions and, and purchase vehicles at a cheaper price. I know the state requires you to have a lot of the stuff that what your dad's established business already has. The question I have is, say, say your dad's fortunate enough to win the Powerball, and he's done, says, here, kid, here's my building.
Yes.
So then, then is it then all the cars are gone and it's a, it's a used car dealer like we see at Grashit? Is that something that has to come back to us again if that were to, like, cause that?
I would like to put that in there for reassurance that that's something I'd have to come back to you guys for if that were to ever happen. Because you're right, you know, things like that could happen. I tried to do a little bit of homework before coming in, and special land use, I, I seen there were spaces where certain things could be applied like that, even time limits as well.
If the applicant wanted to have a kind of outdoor storage display, that would have to be reviewed. I mean, and that, yeah, outdoor, like car sales, the display lot, if you wanted to show cars in the front or something in theory-
Yeah.
-in the future, that's something that would have to get reviewed again.
And if I am putting a timeframe, frame, frame on it, I would, you know, say three years. But because I, I know that you guys want to be cautious about what you're doing as well, too, if something like that were to happen.
Mark, a question, just I've invited the assessment a few times, and doing well, and love to have that, the township. The, one of the questions I had though is there seems to be a lot of parking along the, obviously, the entrance exit, the drive.
Yes.
And I believe we have a letter from the fire marshal. They approved it. There wasn't an issue from their standpoint, Brenda, as far as I know. You don't have to, I'm, I'm sure that we are okay.
It was in your package last month, I believe.
I wrote that email from the fire department as well, like everything, I put my head on there. But I understand-
Well, the cars that are along the side, the curb there?
Yeah.
After we get done repairing them, we line them up there to go, you know, pick up and then shoot out the driveway and go.
So, and that's your exit parking, so to speak?
Right, my, my, my done cars.
Done?
Yeah, you got the done completed, come pick it up.
I'll need that back.
And usually by the end of the night, that whole driveway is cleared out.
See, I would, you know, during the day, so-
Yeah, yeah, we get rolling during the day and move them out at night.
Okay. Karen, is that, is that an issue that we need to address at all? I mean, as far as parking where it is or not?
Well, the parking that we can address is the off-street parking and spaces for customers. That's how parking is calculated for both auto sales, and auto sales and auto repair. So the temporary parking, like the, what Mark's auto was saying, where they're, you know, keeping cars there and then they are moving. That's not something we can address in zoning ordinance.
Okay. And the other, Mark, you told us about the hours of operation.
Hours of operation. So the state requires, I believe, thirty-five hours on display. I've seen many other, because I, I try to do research on people that have gotten their dealer's license. And a lot of people, when they start out, it's a one-man show, so they're not there most of the time. They may be out elsewhere. So I believe I can do by appointment as well, too, as long as I'm available. My business number is my cell phone number, too, so like it's the state's size, like I try to, you know, be there if anybody, you know, meets me. But I, I'm honestly not sure how I'm gonna go about that yet. I'm trying to do by appointment because that's how I do everything. I just don't ever have people coming in to, you know, view something. If anyone's coming, I know they're coming and I meet them.
So it's a rather quick meeting?
Yes, yes.
Maybe it's the early signing documents?
It's, yeah, it's quick. Yeah.
Thank you. Karen?
No. She answered my question.
Mike, anything else?
No, I'm pretty good with everything right now. Keith, you good? Yeah, yeah, that kind of answered my, and I knew what was going on, I thought.
Sure.
But it just seemed a little bit convoluted. There's like a choke point there.
A little congested.
It's, yeah. And then I was thinking, you know, Karen, the fire marshal, but obviously they look like they feel that they can get their rig in. I'm prepared that whatever happened, so that, that's what we're concerned about.
Roland, did you see the pictures? Yeah, I've looked at the pictures. I haven't been able to see the site plan yet. I really haven't studied the details about it. I'm satisfied with the pictures, I guess.
Do I have?
If I have a problem, I can take them up, take a look, see what we got. Karen, yeah?
I need to make a comment.
Sure, Brenda.
They are aware that the sign is a separate permitting process.
Okay.
Mark mentioned flags. I'm quite confident that our ordinance does not allow any type of flapping, you know, those wild crazy things that flap in the wind. I, I believe very, very confidently that those are not allowed. And I also believe that there's only one sign allowed per business. So the signage may be a question. And this may not be the time for it, but it's a process that really does not involve you. It will come to the building department, and then that question will be raised. So just so you're aware of that, and Mark as well, you know.
Yep. So they're not allowed to put a sign out front?
Only one, only one sign.
For, for one business period?
But if they have a pole that could accommodate an upper and a lower sign, that's one sign?
Karen can answer for it.
I believe that is something that can happen, but until that application comes through. I will, I believe you're only not allowed to have one structure for a sign, I believe. I mean, strip malls, you know, they have multiple panels. I believe you can have multiple panels.
Just so he's aware that he doesn't go in.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was hoping for. I had made the joke at the last meeting that it was like it was meant to be because there's a whole spot that's not filled with a sign. So I'm hoping that when it comes around time for that, it'll be one pole, you know, one structure with a pole.
I just don't want you to have any more surprises.
Thank you, I, I think, no, I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just so we don't lose track, and of course, this maybe should go into our notes of meeting. We did receive a letter from Karen, I'm gonna pronounce her name wrong, N I E Z W I C H, I believe. And they are right directly behind this development. So we should note that they sent that in and that everyone here has had a chance to review that. Mark, what it is they're concerned, obviously about too many cars. And, you know, what, what would be the distance between where your development is right now and where their property line would be? That would be two-
At least fifteen acres.
I'm sorry?
Are they, are they off of Melville?
Melville.
Yeah, they're, they're at least fourteen acres away from me.
If you look at the, Keith-
That's the first house off of, off of twenty-six. They're almost fourteen acres away from me.
She said she butts up right to your property on her letter.
No.
So here's Melville Road. Nice big highway.
Actually, the corner of Melvyn, twenty-six.
So this is, Keith, this is, is Mark's property here.
Yeah.
And you have this parcel here, and this is the one-
We can show, run the letter.
Or maybe this helps you more. See, this is, is her property here, then here's this large parcel owned by D and Ventures, and then Mark is here. So you have from the corner of property here to this corner of property here is the distance between her property and his property.
So her property does end all the way there?
No, no, no. This D and E venture wraps around the back.
Oh, oh, so she doesn't butt up to his property at all?
Her property does not adjoin his property.
No, I sold that, I sold that parcel between your, me and her last couple of years ago. Almost fourteen acres, I sold it to somebody else.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, and then-
We also have, you know, the needs add, he also says she had no problem with him coming up with her car business, and her property butts up right up to Mark's.
There was another ladder in your package.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah, so just so you know.
Northeast, northeast Marine City Highway in Melville. So she would be northeast, she would be this one here on the opposite side of Melvyn Road. So she's even a little bit further away, but her position was that she has no problem with it.
Which is vacant land.
She's been there for twenty-six. Oh, this is?
Yeah, according to this.
Mark, how many, how many years have you been there?
Uh, twenty, it's going to twenty-eight this month, actually. ADY.
It's in that, but look, it's, it says Marine City.
That's her, probably her mailing address.
Oh, I see, okay, so it says vacant land.
Forty-ten-three-hundred.
Is that the same number?
Yeah, forty-ten-three-hundred, yes, so it's vacant. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of profit, sir. Okay. A motion, something? Make a motion to approve the special land use for nine one six six Marine City Highway.
I'll second that, wait a second. I think we need a motion to close the public hearing first.
Close the public.
Do you have a couple of comments? Couple of comments, dude, sorry. We have to open it after the public.
All right, so as part of, Mark, thank you, sir. If you, if you have nothing else, we're gonna, we'll open the podium to public comments. So as part of the public hearing, we will open the podium to public comments in regards to this special land use. If anyone would like to step forward and speak to this topic?
Don't personally, anyone not here?
Uh huh. Okay. As Keith mentioned, we did have two letters in regards to this. One, approving it, approving of it, and one, not approving of it. Neither, neither letter writer seems to be here tonight. So we'll move on, we'll close the, the citizen comments, and we'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie? Okay, the next thing we'll need is a motion to approve or deny the request for special land use. Can you make your motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special land use for ninety-one sixty-six Marine City Highway for Mark A. Williams.
And I'll second that.
And a motion and a second to approve it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie? Go get them, guys.
All right, good luck.
Good luck to you, guys.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, the next thing on the, the agenda for tonight is unfinished business. Number one item here is administrative assistant, update to the Robert Clancy site plan.
So Mr. Clancy, when he came before me last month, had, in your motion, if I remember correctly, Mr. Hill made the motion that his site plan be approved contingent, I'm paraphrasing. The two existing buildings be brought into compliance per the building official, and whatever permits an inspection were going to be required to get certificates of occupancy. Mr. Clancy is proceeding with the application process. Roland did do a site evaluation, and it has been determined that he will need, in addition to the building, before the building can be finalized and C of O's issued, an electrical permit must be issued, and Mr. Clancy is in the process of getting his electrical contractor to get that permit. And so he is proceeding, and he's been very cooperative and very amicable. So just wanted to let you know that we are, we're working towards getting those two done an hour away so he can proceed with the two, with the, the hoop building thing, so.
So did he pay for all the permits, like the building, and do all those things, all those buildings?
The building that you, that has not been started yet, we have not even accepted his application.
I'm talking about the ones that he did, did they already pay for the starting of that, the, the whole thing?
He has to get the electrical permit. He has paid for the building permit, so the building permit is, has been issued. But before Roland can issue the C of O's, he must clear the electrical aspect of the building, of both buildings. So.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
I don't think he has any plumbing in those buildings. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that topic?
No.
Thank you, Brenda. All right.
I do.
Oh, you're welcome.
Do we, do, 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 uh, citizen comments on each of these items, or wait till the end?
No, the comments will be taken at the end.
On, according to the agenda. Yep, okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll give you the opportunity to comment on, on any of the agenda items at the end. Thank you. Okay, number two in unfinished business is the C R O discussion.
So at the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission held a public hearing for adopting a C R O, and that would be a compatible renewable energy ordinance that would basically be in line with the state standards. That was tabled to further explore what options are for the township. We've gotten a letter from the township attorney. And I've also provided some information that came from U of M, basically talking about the different options communities have. Again, a community can choose to adopt the compatible renewable energy ordinance, which basically falls in line with state standards. A community can choose to just defer to the state if a developer were to come through. A community could choose to keep what they currently have in the books. Casco currently has both a solar and wind ordinances. You don't have anything for batteries, so you can choose to keep what you have. Or you can update your ordinance to basically be what people are calling a workable ordinance where, you know, you are adapting language for the wind, solar- you are adapting language for the wind, solar, battery storage, um, setting your standards for those things, um, and in hopes that, um, it's palatable enough to a developer to choose to go through the local permitting process as opposed to the state. Um, the theory of that is that it's going to be a lot quicker for developers to get approval at the local level than they would at the state level, the state can take up to a year to review, um, a renewable energy project. If a community does adopt a CREO, um, they are eligible for, I think it's five grand per megawatt of the project. However, um, based on what Michigan Township Association has said, and what we are seeing in the state is, a lot of these projects actually fall under multiple jurisdictions. So you could have one project that might be, you know, fifty-two-hundred megawatts, but they have part of it in Casco, and then maybe part of it in Ira, or some other neighboring township, and if, you know, in theory, the developer, if both, um, communities either have a workable ordinance, or something that the developer wants to work with at the local level, they can choose to go through the township. If one of your neighbors is deferring to the state, or, um, you know, is, doesn't participate in the local permitting process for it, it will automatically get back to the state. So even if you adopt a CREO thinking, well, this might gain the most financial benefit for our township, there's no guarantee that if a development does come through that, it would even get to be reviewed locally, because if another jurisdiction, for whatever reason, wouldn't allow for the developer to also apply locally, then it gets kicked to the state. Um, any community that does host a renewable energy development, um, I believe the financial kickback is going to be two grand per megawatt. So that's if you either defer to the state, or choose to keep what you have, or develop a workable ordinance. Um, the five grand would only be if a development happened, um, either solely within Casco, or happened in a way where Casco would be allowed to do the local permitting process with an adopted CREO. As far as I've heard, none of your neighbors are adopting a CREO at this moment. Um, some of them are looking at the workable ordinance. That seems to be a direction that a lot of communities are considering, because at least it gives them a chance to have some input, and hoping that maybe a developer is willing to work with them, um, while, you know, keeping, uh, either keeping the standards that they currently have, or, um, I'm trying to find the words, but just, um, I'd say accounting for the community concerns of these projects. The attorney did say in his letter that if Cas, if you guys did want to move forward and adopt a CREO, um, he would strongly recommend that we adopt specific language for decommissioning, and I would also recommend upon doing further research on this, um, there, if Casco did want to adopt a CREO, also have very specific language for what the emergency plans need to be submitted for on this, and, um, I believe also, um, yeah, emergency plans for fire departments and stuff like that, and what is the plan in case there is an emergency? That was not provided, the decommissioning plans and the emergency plans were not provided in the MTA sample. Um, I was able to find that language specifically in the act, and I picked it out, so if Casco does want to still consider looking at a CREO, I can bring that language back to deal with those updates, but it's always up to the planning commission of what route they think might be best for the township.
Thank you, Karen. It's a lot, it's a lot to digest, with a very little background on the whole topic.
Anyone on there? Anyone on this topic?
Yeah, I got a question, John. I'll try and sit down in my seat, and then do this thing. Karen, you're gonna get tired of me asking this, but, um, they have the ability to go, they being a developer, into any of our zoning districts, correct?
Correct.
And we've discussed about trying to limit this to industrial, but I remember a few conversations with, with Steve, and obviously with Joe, um, and it just seems like that is not even an option on the table. Is that still correct?
I wouldn't say it's not an option, I guess, it, you know, if, if whatever Casco, whatever township wants to consider doing, just understand what the realities are going to be, your industrial zone is so limited, um, compared to, you know, what the makeup is of the rest of the township, and they're going to want, you know, basically farmland, I believe, you know, they're gonna want clear land in order to set up these facilities, and they're really not gonna find that much in your industrial zone.
Well, and that's why we have, but we're all, our departments, I mean, if they wanted to come in for a hundred acres, they could get a rezoning, try to, anyway, on Twenty-six Mile. You know, that was one of the discussions we had here about any development that's going here, and so I, I guess my question still is, would it be worthwhile to even ask that question to the township attorney at all?
We could.
It just, uh, it just, it just concerns me that, you know, everybody in this room, all of us have worked very hard, and we're trying to keep our own, our open territory, if you will, in, in the ag area, and then what we do, and this is like an open invitation, but, you know, we have, one thing we have going, folks, is Casco Township is property. Uh, we have open terrain, and we're gonna have all kinds of folks coming through, through the doors, and not only Detroit Edison, but a lot of other folks. So I just think it may be worthwhile, one more time, you know, we won't do it anymore, um, to ask them if that's even a viable scenario.
I, I would say if, if Casco did decide to pass ordinance language that just limited it to the industrial district, if a developer wanted to develop elsewhere, they would just go to the state, and that's just what would happen.
I, you know, and I read that, and I thought, so if, if we decide, no, we only want your industrial, we would be taken out of the picture.
Right, I'd say, I'd say that goes, that would go, you know, in this handout that I...
Yep.
They have this, the CREO, what the state has, what a workable ordinance is, and what unworkable is.
And that was...
And fortunately, I'd say something like that. I understand it's for good intentions, but it would fall into that unworkable category, and I think, I just don't think that's going to be where a lot of developers are gonna be looking.
Okay. I won't do it anymore, Joe. Yeah, but again, I, I think we, we owe something to the people of Casco, um, that we maybe at least try, and, uh, Joe, maybe even a little, if you could, even offer a letter from Casco, if you, if you thought that would be worthwhile, to at least, at least ask the question, um, and it's, and then go from there. They at least folks have an idea of what we're trying to do, and trying to get a handle on this. I mean, the average person who reads this, I, you know, if you don't have a degree in law, you're, you're kind of lost, and I don't even think they have a real good idea of what's gonna come down the pike here.
They don't, it's, there's a lot, you know, I had asked them, you know, if the community adopts a workable ordinance, and let's just say there's a dispute on an issue, and basically the developer's following something that is in line with state guidelines, but not what was in line with the Casco ordinance, what would happen? And the attorney has said basically that, that's something that's gonna have to be figured out in court. They don't have an answer for that right now, so.
I understand.
And I think we...
It's somehow...
Go ahead.
It is the MTAs and attorneys' opinion to adopt a CREO, right?
Well, MTA has been telling communities to adopt the workable ordinance. That's what they're encouraging a lot of communities to do. Our attorney has said that, you know, basically adopting a CREO, um, in, you know, probably is the most straightforward, and potentially would have the most financial benefit to the township, but, um, you know, it, very, as far as I know, very few communities are actually adopting a CREO right now.
And I think we talked about this last time, but there's nothing that says if we don't adopt one now, we can't adopt one in the future, as we continue to learn more about this, just anything applied for before would fall under...
The only penalty that a township could face is if, that they claim they have a CREO, and they don't. That, that's when a township could face penalties. So as long as Cas, if a developer approaches the township, and whether you keep what you currently have, or you start developing something different, you know, you would just have to be upfront and honest about what you actually have, and you can't say it's a CREO because it's not.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. I mean, this is obviously not something that I would expect that we'll make a decision on tonight, but it's, it's good information, and there's a lot of data in, in this packet that we've been supplied with, so it would be my opinion that we, each individual can take a look at some of this, try to understand better this workable ordinance versus a CREO. I do think that this information that's been provided is, does, provides some good insight that's relatively easy to understand, um, so I think, it would be my opinion that, at this point, we table a discussion and come back to this once we are a little bit more comfortable with, with the difference between adopting the CREO or workable ordinance going from there. Do you have any objection to that? Any objection, any reason why we shouldn't table this together more?
No, I think the planning commission should take their time to make decisions.
Okay.
Anybody else have any objection to that?
I think we should table and get some more info on that before we make a decision to...
It has changed, too.
Yes.
Uh, this is gonna be something that's ever-changing, and, you know, I think it's gonna be something that a lot of townships learn...
As we go.
As they go, and hopefully somebody else, yeah, somebody else is the getting pig for a developer, and we can learn from them.
Yep. Um, I know U of M has like a spreadsheet going on, talking about, um, you know, basically where have solar development, or where have renewable energy developments happened in the state, and basically what got passed and what actually got built, and I believe right now, uh, near, somewhat nearby, Fort Grashit has had, has recently approved a renewable energy development, so if people are curious, wanting to look at what that development might look like, they can look at the planning commission meetings for that.
Okay.
That's good to know. Thanks for providing that stuff from U of M, too.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a lot easier reading than this legal stuff.
Yeah, that was really good.
Okay. Anything else on the CREO discussion? Is anybody on the board? Okay. Uh, at this time, the next item on the agenda is new business, in which case I will recuse myself so that I can step up to the podium on the special land use.
Our new item is special land use request for ZLM services, nine-four-two-two Marine City Highway for temporary use for concrete crushing on site. John Sekone, applicant.
How you doing, John? So in front of you is the application for special land use for us to perform a, for a temporary period of time, concrete recycling. Um, the parcel that we operate from, we have stockpiled some recycled concrete, stage. Uh, what we're coming in front of the board to ask for is special land use to crush that concrete into a usable product, typically road gravel or base material for driveway patios. We're looking at a hiring an outside company to come in and do this for us. Uh, they expect to, to complete the project in two months or less. We are looking to start the project just after the first of the year, so our goal is to get the approval and crush the concrete in January and February. Uh, we feel like this is an ideal time, so that we are less intrusive to our neighbors as possible. Feel that in the winter time, people's windows are closed, and they're not outside as often, trying to enjoy their backyard, so we feel like this is the best-case scenario. Again, this is our company that we're hiring to come in and do it. They are permitted by the state of Michigan, as well as Eagle, who's the governing authority over this type of operation, um, and this is something, like I said, that we don't anticipate doing for a long period of time, we just wanna clean up the pile, turn it into something we can use, and then they'll, you know, clean up and move on to wherever they go next. I think there might, there were some questions from our original, from our application, um, the applicant, so applicant provide licensing information, we will get the licensing and permit information from the company that's doing it when they pull their permit through the state of Michigan and Eagle. The company that's coming in to do it, they'll have two to three employees, parking won't be impacted, they'll be parking at the site of the machine.
My concern, John, is the last time you got this over the summary, you had a lot of residents in your area complaining about the dust, the baking...
Beep beep beep.
...up for and over, that you plan on doing anything to muffle that for the residents in the area behind you, that I know they were concerned about last time?
We do, so the, the ordinance does state that we have to provide dust control, so we'll have water on site, with a water truck, or have a water truck, they'll utilize that to...
So, what type of hours you plan on doing that, on crushing concrete? Is it gonna be a Monday through Sunday thing?
Monday.
You're doing a couple hours a day, is it gonna be all day object?
It would, it would conform with the ordinance, which would be Monday through Friday, no earlier than eight AM, no later than six PM. Realistically, no later than four thirty. I mean, if it's dark, and it's not an operation...
That's gonna be consistent, five days a week, eight hours a day, with that rock crusher going?
I mean, I, I guess it's possible, yeah, I mean, we wanna get it done as quickly as possible to minimize the impact, so I would hope that, you know, we can run as much as we can during the hours given to get the job done.
Are you gonna be bringing more rock from off-site to on there to keep, or you just crushing what's on the...
No, just what's on the press.
...on the property now?
Correct.
So it could be, you could crush it quicker than two months, it'd be done in a month or so?
Yeah, I mean, that's, two months is kind of worst-case scenario, of course, you can...
What, now the snow, or weather?
Weather-related, and then obviously, you know, if, if a machine breaks down, or they have any issues mechanically, you know, that could extend it, but obviously if that happens, then there's no crushing during that period either.
Gotcha. How loud is that rock crusher?
From, so, I don't know how to...
If, if that rock crusher's crushed, or, or sitting in this building, it might listen to it, uh, smash rocks?
It'd be hard to say. I, I mean, I haven't actually been on site for the machine that they're bringing, so I haven't seen it run. The machine we had on site last year was an older machine, I think it was a little bit in disrepair, so it was a little bit louder than the company we're using this time, it's a different company. They have a relatively new machine, supposed to be state-of-the-art, so, I mean, of course I'd like to go take a look at when, you know, when they're doing it, but right now their operations, the, the pile that they're crushing right now is about an hour and a half away, and I haven't had an opportunity to go check it out.
Is there a way to deflect it from going back towards residents?
I'm sure that, that, you know, we could set it up in a way that, you know, we, we try to keep it as far away from the residential side. Our property has residential on one side and, and industrial on the other side, so our goal is to keep everything as close to the east property line that we can, try to minimize that.
And do you know, tell me how far you are from, like, a house?
Uh, from the dead center... From the dead center of our property to the back of the closest, or next house is about a thousand feet.
John, one of the things that we're going to have to look at is obviously the noise.
Sure.
That's the big one. And one of the things that's in our ordinance, which is that you know, is that we have a sixty-five decibel rating on noise factors in any of our zoning areas than we have township. Sixty-five decibels is, I don't know, it's a loud car with a loud, you know, exhaust type of thing. How can we, how can we assure our residents that that's where, that's where you're going to go with this? In other words, you know, that, that's the real concern here, I would think.
Yeah, I would agree with you there. And, I mean, two things. Of course, you know, we can have a noise meter on site so that, you know, we can measure noise, volume, decibels at the property line. Obviously, we can't encroach outside of our own property, but we can do that to monitor. But I will say there's other crushing operations on our street within a line of sight from where I'm at. And if the machine that comes in is anything like the machine that I've seen operate down our road, I don't think it'll be an issue because I could stand from here to the other side of that parking lot and you hardly hear the machine run. You see it. You can see the stone coming off of it, but you don't hardly hear it at all. There's different styles of crushers. There's a jaw crusher and an impact crusher. So an impact crusher is a louder machine versus a jaw style crusher. So that's why, another reason why we went with a different company, so that we could get a machine that will hopefully, you know, help out in that area.
But how do we know if we're getting that, you mean?
Well, I mean, that would be included in the permit information that the mobile operation will provide.
Would the owner of that company come in and talk to us?
Honestly, why not?
Is he able to bring like, and have a decibel meter and stand a hundred feet away and see how it works?
Okay, so why not? I mean, this is an operation that these guys, these guys have been in business for twenty-plus years and it's all they do is mobile crushing. Crushing townships all around metro Detroit area in very heavily populated areas such as Pontiac and Detroit, out in rural areas like this, you know, like I said, they are permitted by the state of Michigan and Eagle, which is environmental, I don't know if I figured exactly what it stands for, but, I mean, they're an up-and-up company. It's, we're not just bringing a wrecking ball in and just smashing stuff to be, you know what I mean?
And it sounded like last time the highway or whatever was running, beeping backwards was, was a lot of the noise that they heard too.
Yeah, I mean, of course, you know, in construction, you're always going to have the backup alarm of any type of construction equipment. I mean, that's, it's a safety thing. It's an OSHA thing. You can't turn it off just because people can hear it. I understand that it's not always the most pleasant thing to hear, but, I mean, I'll be honest, from my house, I can hear the backup alarm with the dozers on the landfill, which is almost five miles from my house. And those guys are starting at six AM every single day. Unfortunately, it's just if...
I got that decibel or sixty-five decibels?
I would think so. I mean, because like I said, I'm, I'm every bit of four and a half, five miles from that landfill and I can hear that dozer every morning I leave my house. I mean, this is, again, I mean, it's a temporary thing. We want to do it. We want to do it quickly and we want to be done with it as quickly as possible. And again, that's one of the reasons why we chose the winter time, as we feel like...
Down the back of that property, John, are you putting a fence or a wall back there to muffle that sound or something?
No, we will not be installing a fence. This is a temporary operation. And so the fence requirement is at an eight-foot height. It wouldn't make a difference anyways because the crushers taller than eight feet and the piles taller than eight feet.
You said you did this before. Was, when it was done before, was that in the winter or summer months?
It was done in the winter.
Yeah, winter?
I think last year we did it in December.
No, no, it was summer. It was summer. Remember, you had the huge job crisis.
Oh, I remember. There was several people.
You woke us right up.
I'd have to look back at the information, but maybe early spring. I don't think it would. I know it wasn't, you know, warm, warm summertime because the last guy that had, we did it, he, he came and did it in his off-season, you know, and so...
Karen, you have any other ideas?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that right now what we're doing is just preliminary review. Just letting everyone know in the audience, we're not holding a public hearing tonight. That's actually going to be scheduled tonight to be held in December. And that's when we'll hold a public hearing and take public comment on this at the public hearing. But, you know, the applicant has, what the applicant had submitted when they submitted their application, you know, we just need more information on the physical plan and the paperwork to address these concerns. And he's talked about addressing some of those concerns here. And I do understand, you know, this is a temporary use. However, you know, concrete crushing is listed with these standards in the special land use section of the zoning ordinance. And it does say that there needs to be some sort of screening. Now, if the applicant wants to get a variance because this is temporary use, they can do that, but that's a separate process and that's a separate board they'll have to go through. But the planning commission can't really deviate from these standards set out here without the variance from a separate board. I understand it's temporary, but unfortunately, we just don't have any legal room that would allow us to... There's no language in here that says, you know, if this is used as temporary, the planning commission can make the determination. It doesn't say that. So...
So this is written as special planning?
No, this isn't, this isn't a special land use, but, you know, the applicant was asked if he was going to provide screening and he said, no, this is a temporary use. We're not doing that. Well, in order to go to, you know, in order to be able to do that, that's going to have to be a decision made by the zoning board of appeals. So...
I wanted, just a couple of things. John, maybe it's something you want to throw out with your guys and see if it has any legs. But if you were to put out a temporary screening law of some sort, that's not going to cost you an arm and a leg, but still would demonstrate, I think, a lot to the neighbors that you would be willing to do something like that. And I'm talking maybe, I don't know, maybe it's twenty-foot high, maybe it's the, not this, but it's some material in that area along where, you know, on that westerly property line. And I think that may shield at least some of the sound that we're talking about. And I also would suggest that maybe at our next meeting, you have, you have the concrete subcontractor here. They may even have some videos, they might have some information for us that we can look at and share with the neighbors.
If they have any type of a PowerPoint or video?
We ought to use that thing.
Yeah, well, we have Katie probably come.
Taxpayers probably want us to use that.
I'm sure you could probably YouTube it and put a video up there, whatever plant they planted.
The GBS are kicking out on that machine throughout the day.
I wasn't here for the last one. Was it the major complaint, noise or was it the site of a crusher and a...
It was dusting, noise.
It was dusting, noise.
And I thought I saw something online, John, where, again, dealing with exactly what we're talking about here. And they have provided some type of screen right around the crusher.
Yeah, maybe that's something that we can...
And again, your guy, you know, they deal with it all the time.
Yeah.
And deal with neighbors. So it might be something that...
That would be good, good.
Yeah, and it might be something we can show folks to at least give them an understanding of.
At least you're trying to not to... That's what the audience say, if people wants to do this. I'm just breaking up, when it's a special land use, you're saying in between, say, January, February, right? And all of a sudden, you already, bad weather, whatever happens, you got to have the pile done, right? The way that breeds, you would have to stop at a certain point, right? So you got to watch your language and how you say this.
Oh, if I say that it's going to be for two months and it locks it in for two months...
This is your business, right? So odds are you're going to pile again next year, right?
I mean, we'll see how it goes. I mean, the first year didn't go that well. So, I mean, if it continues, you know, if we do well this time around, then yeah, I mean, maybe it's something that we do on an annual basis. I mean, we're not, we're not looking to crush all the time. I think there's enough other guys in the neighborhood that are doing that. We're more or less just recycling the material that we remove from our jobs and turn it back into a usable product that we can use on our jobs again. So... We're not doing this for retail sales. We're not trying to open a crushing yard. We're going to have, you know, we're selling to the public and other contractors. It's just a way for us to reduce business costs and reuse the material that we have.
Recycle.
Recycle.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
Do we need to make a motion for...
To schedule?
To schedule a public hearing?
Yep.
Yeah, make a motion to schedule a public hearing for December... December seventeenth, planning commission meeting for nine four two two Marine City Highway.
I'll second that. That's a good sign.
Done. Done your mic to call.
What I got to do?
Provoke.
Oh. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in that?
Thanks, John. Thank you, folks.
So Karen has the language for the publication ready. It must be published in the paper on the twenty-seventh in order for us to get the letters to neighboring property owners within the three hundred feet of their site. And so those letters will go out next, is Thanksgiving week. So I will have the letters ready, addressed and stamped. I will have to take them home with me and mail them the day after we make sure the publication is in the paper. If it doesn't hit the paper, we can't have the hearing. So Karen has done this for us several times. It's always run like clockwork, so that, that will be the plan. And as you have in your copies, in your packets for the Williams public hearing, will be a repeat with John's information.
Perfect.
Copy of the letters, the addresses to the neighboring property owners that the letters went to. Any communications will be in your packets for December.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the master plan five-year update. And we're looking to schedule a public hearing in regards to the master plan. Karen, want to provide us some insight on this?
Yeah, I believe there was a board meeting in which the draft was presented and some very minor changes were asked. So that's been reflected in the updated master plan packet you have. And we're ready to schedule a public hearing to adopt the master plan at the N S, planning commission meeting.
Anybody have any comments or anything in regards to the master plan? Any updates? Karen, can you touch real quick, what were, do you know offhand, what were the updates made?
You know, the only update that Steve told me to do was update the map. And that was to reflect the Bell River part.
Okay.
So there may have been some spelling errors. I can't think of anything else, really.
And the updated master plan is on the township website for the public review, casco St Clair dot gov.
Mike, Keith, Gina, anything on the master plan?
No.
Just a quick comment, just on behalf of our church, St. Paul's. So thank you for giving the picture in there. That looks great. It looks really well done. Appreciate it.
Dan or Jim, anything on the master plan?
Good.
Good. At this point, I'll ask for a motion to schedule the public hearing. Schedule for the December seventeenth, please. December seventeenth.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the master plan, update two thousand twenty-four, for December seventeenth.
A motion of a second?
What second?
A motion of a second to schedule a public hearing for the master plan five-year update. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Period. Thank you. And how does that public hearing work? Do you got to send out letters to everybody or just...
No, it's just the publication or paper.
Just the publication or the paper. Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the planners' update. Karen?
I don't have any news.
No? The next item on the agenda would be citizen comments. We will open the podium to any citizens wishing to comment on the items on the agenda minus the public hearing that we had a specific public comment section for. This time, anybody like to address the board?
I've got a couple of questions.
State your name and address.
Jim Dennis, fifty-eight thirty-six church. Whatever the guy's name is, had a building problem, built the buildings.
Oh, Clancy?
Clancy. He's a pretty nice guy. We all know him. But the last time he was here, he had, you guys had a question, you were going to put in his buildings. And he couldn't answer that. He said nothing was going in the buildings. And now you're going to put electric in this and that in a building. Something's going in the building.
The electrical, so if I may interrupt you, is for the two buildings that currently exist.
Okay.
That he had permitted for. No, the new one, he is not, we have the application in our office, but per their last meeting, until those two existing buildings are finalized out, building, and any other supporting permits such as the electrical, we're not proceeding with the new building yet.
Okay, but you know, I had a real question with, you know, the guys asked that and he said nothing's going in the building. No rock crushers, no crazy stuff.
Both was there.
No, I...
Both was there.
Just storage equipment, so that's all.
I think...
I mean, storage, I mean, it was just like, nothing's going in the building. It was like, are you kidding?
Maybe I can clarify on this because I know there was a conversation regarding the shipping containers he wants to use as foundation for his hoop building. Those, he said, that will not be used for storage. Nothing's going in those. But I don't believe, and I could be wrong. I don't believe that.
You're probably right.
I don't believe he never intended to use the building that he built pre-permit phase, let's call it that. I don't believe he ever, did not intend to use those for storage of equipment.
No, I don't think I heard it.
Not this, I'm not talking about the trailers or whatever those things are.
Yeah, but he's talking about the...
Talking about what was he going to do in the building. He asked that. I mean, he said nothing's going in the building, so something's going in the building.
Yeah, I don't think he intended the hoop building. Nothing was going in the hoop building.
He was talking about...
The storage, the shipping containers that are the base of the hoop. Karen, you're not allowed to put anything inside of those.
All right. Well, and you, on the other hand, also said there's guys with rock crushers and things in the area that you can see. I can't see them, but we definitely heard rock crushers. Is he one? Has he got a rock crusher back there?
Clancy has a lot of equipment out back. So I haven't personally been into the back of his property, so I can't speak to them.
When you were there, did you see a rock crusher in the building?
I don't know what he all had back there. I didn't check it.
No, it's all fenced off and stuff, so you can't get back in there, so. I'm not, I wasn't around here. I don't care, but...
I looked at the buildings and I saw what he was going to put up as far as the hoop building goes. That's all we have, the ordinance.
Okay.
Ordinance guide.
Somebody's gotta tell you what they're gonna do. This poor guy's gotta tell you what he's gonna do with cars and stuff. And Mr. Clancy, whatever he wants, and nobody gives a rat's ass, so.
Well, I wouldn't say that.
Well, it didn't happen, nobody figured it out, so. Just saying. I, I'm concerned about that stuff, so.
Understood.
Okay.
Yep.
We need to be concerned.
Any other citizens that would like to address the board?
My name's Jim Zolak. I'm at 5879 Church Road. My property is just one of John and C L L. My concern was last spring. It was loud. Okay, I was the one that was right behind him. I mean, it was starting, John knows it, it was starting at 5:03 in the morning, too. I know he said it was older equipment, but it was shaking the windows in back my house. It was that loud. Now, my big question was, is he gonna put screening up? Is there gonna be anything done to help with the noise? And his first answer was no. So it is kind of concerning to me. There's no, you know, he says the machine's quiet, but how to prove that.
Sure.
That's my concern.
So what, while you're up there, was it your main concern, the noise, or was there, how much dust was there?
It was mainly noise for me. Because my property is literally right there next to his property. There was a lot of dust, don't get me wrong. You know, I have three little kids now. That guy, the confluence, the swing cell was just full. No question. So, yeah, it was, it was a pain. And they go for quite a while. And like I said, it started very early in the morning, that's all.
So him saying that it's gonna be done in the winter months, is that?
I'm happy to hear that. I will say, you know, I'm happy to hear it, because the windows were shut. But I need to know it's gonna be quiet, you know, for sure. It can't be the same decibels, because it was rattling windows in the back. It was that loud. But they, I will say the good too. You know, we complained about the lights. They did put those down. You know, those were going directly into my house at one point, so. I just hope he does the same with the crusher this time. Consider the name.
He said it was gonna start eight, right?
Yeah. Well, we gather some information from the board when they come the next morning. We can get some more answers for that, how loud the machine is, maybe some screening up there that'll protect your.
Right, so that'll be, that's what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
It'll help. Because we are very close. We heard it.
How far away are you, approximately?
I'm not going. What do you think, Jim?
I'm gonna say two, 300 yards.
It's a thousand.
No, it isn't. No, no, it is not.
300 yards? 300 yards is 900 feet?
No.
That's about, yeah, that'd be about.
But the problem is with the distance on him, your mounds and excavators and dozers are bigger, taller than his house. That's normal? I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk after.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm talking. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anthony Minney, 5864 Church Road. I live across the street from this gentleman, and I can hear it in my house, in my barn, I can hear it when he turns it on, okay? I thought you speak for us, supposed to have the interest of us in this, in here, okay? You don't have the interest, interest. In fact, you should, you should actually excuse yourself, because you knew what you were doing when you turned that machine on this summer. And then you come in here for a variance. Anything gonna happen? You didn't even come over to this man and see how far away or noise you are making with the dust? Never had no water back here. And you continue to do it. And you, and you say you're gonna take and get a variance, crush, bring it out. Well, just take and haul it out like you hauled it in. Why can't you do that? You're gonna make the same amount of money. Okay, a couple bucks less because he didn't crush it up. But you could take, there's two crushers down the road.
The machine to load it into the truck is the same machine that would load it into the crusher. That, the note, from a noise perspective, you're talking about a machine on top of a hill. I'm sorry, sir, but it's not, it's not gonna be any different. It's not gonna be any different. And, and to be quite honest with you, this would be the, at the public hearing next month, is where you could bring these concerns you have and accusations, and we could talk about them. Because that's what the public hearing.
Supposed to open, now this is sent on, on a letter, his comments after that, right there. Now all of a sudden, it's supposed to be opened up to the public?
It's a public engagement.
It's a pu, it's a public. I'm serious.
That's fine, that's fine.
And before we have the next meeting, I would like each and every one of you to drive by there and look at it, and see the difference that we're talking now to when he, what he's gonna do.
True.
Do you mind if they pull to your driveway and look? We have the seat.
I have the note there.
That's, that's fair.
You could drive right into my property. I'm more welcome to anybody that comes seeing.
I'm talking about this gentleman that has to hear it and see it. And I have to hear it and see it. And that person has to hear it and see it. And then you come in here and try to slip a variance to help me get in there. Yet.
But it's not a variance.
I understand that, but him being on a board, he should know better. And it's been going on. Hell, he knew that when he built the place, what he was gonna do.
Mr. Minney, I believe that at the public hearing, every one of the comments as to the barrier must be addressed. And I would ask you, I clearly see that there's not much trust between you and the gentleman that sits there.
No.
But I would ask you to have trust in his colleagues who have pretty much pinned him to the wall.
I understand that, but they need to drive by there and just look. That's all I'm asking. Just drive by there and look, and then you can see. And I'm not, listen, I'm not condoning you to make it, make money and business there. You have to consider us, what you're doing to us. And another thing, you think that the noise ain't bad. You gotta understand, we're around woods. You know the echo that comes out of that? That lady right there, she sees the dust from her place. And she's about a mile, two miles down the street.
Half a mile.
So.
Water should take care of the dust, right?
You never had the water going.
We can't, we can't, we can't talk about.
Water ain't rip.
We're not talking about what happened last year. We're here for what he wants to do this year, not what he did before. We have a whole list of stuff, red, red ink, that he has to address.
Okay.
That's what we're here. I wasn't here at the last meeting. I wasn't part of that. I'm just here.
I was here at one of the meetings where he excused himself, and I talked about that back then. You were there, we're, we're here?
No.
You were here?
No. So, I mean, he has, Karen has given him a whole list of red ink that he has to address.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other citizens that would like to comment or address the board? Well, I didn't lie, I'm sure. Anthony?
Yes, sir.
5864, was that your?
5864. I'm directly across the street from this gentleman.
What's your, what's yours?
I'm 587. He's, I'm across the street.
So you're on the, you're on the west side of the church?
Yes.
And I'm next to him.
And he's next to me.
Okay. Thank you.
How you doing? Hi, PJ Governor, 7676 Plattegut. I'm on the east side of the township. Want to address the CREO, right? Pay attention to what's going on in Fort Gresham. Is it Ranger Solar Power Ranger? Like, over 1,000 acres, split all over the place. They are probably going to try and recall their board. Just be aware, because they allowed them to make that final approval just this last week. In China, they're talking about data centers.
I have a question, Mr. Back up. Did the board approve it?
The board in Fort Gresham finally, they gave final approval, I believe, just maybe Thursday. It's bad. It is really, really bad up there. Our, if we have any kind of CREO or address the nonsense of three elected, unelected bureaucrats and Clancy telling us what to do with our property in our township, we need to address data centers as well. We cannot leave that on the table. And I don't believe we should just go along with what the state says. I don't care what they're talking about, money. Casco's a beautiful township. They will flatmate. They will just come in and they will flatmate. They're already talking, China shot down one, actually, they backed out of a data center deal. DTE is considering putting it on their property. I've been in IT for 40 years. This month is 40 years. And I assure you, we do not want data centers in this area. There are wells in New Mexico or Arizona going dry because they're putting up these data centers. They use, one data center uses the equivalent of 100,000 homes of electricity. They employ no one. They're a lights-off or whatever you call that kind of operation. You do not want this here. The sound, and even if you put in solar, the sound is horrible. People, they say 300 feet or whatever it is, you can hear it. The noise levels are often above what the WHO recommends, which is like 45 decibels max. And they're talking 65, 75, even with the turbines. So I, I'm, I'm just saying, we really need to have our act together. And as a township, we should have signed on to the Foster Swift work. They're not our attorney, but we need to sign on with what they're doing to take this back and try and repeal that state nonsense. Right now, there's like 57 townships. We should have been 58. So, there you go.
That's good information.
I know a lot. Please feel free to reach out. I post up on our Casco page when it makes sense to post it there.
Thank you.
I just don't want us to lose what we've got. I, I love it here, if you can't tell.
You can tell. I can tell.
Any other citizen comments?
I'm not sure if this is, I'm a citizen, but this isn't a citizen thing. It's about the, well, this is probably too strong of a word, but I know Keith and I have worked on this. There's a breakdown, and it's been consistent between your decisions at the table and the building department. Mr. Williams made an error. He did not know that he needed a building permit. He left the table thinking that your approval was the only approval that he needed. So I'm hoping that somehow in your process, Mr. Clancy is well aware of what's gonna be required because of what has transpired with his two existing buildings. But when you have an applicant that's coming in, that is getting your site plan approval for a brand-new construction, somehow in the minutes or during the course of your motion, if it could be made clear that they don't have carte blanche to start construction, that your approval is the first of more than one step. Because Keith and I were having meetings with applicants after your approval, because there's road commission approval, there's dray commission approval. Some of that comes after you give your approval. And they come with their application, and we ask, where's your approval from the road commission? Where's your approval from the dray commission? Where's your approval for the health department? And they say, we didn't know we needed it. So it's not really been a big problem, but it has been a bit of a frustration on, on your applicants, that they think that when they leave your table, they're all set.
So you want us after, if we make a motion to move forward or whatever, to direct them to come in and see, see you prior to.
Yes, because there's building procedure that must follow your.
As an applicant, wouldn't you know, they should have all those ducks in the road and know these things to go into, going into it? As a business owner, someone building, something built on their property, they should know all that coming into it, what they need to have.
Well, you can assume that they should.
Is that our responsibility now to show them, tell them that they have to do these things?
Well, I think it's, Mike, it's, it's evident that people don't quite fully understand how the process works. And so as a service to the residents, we can just inform them that you've been granted site plan approval by the planning commission. Your next step is to meet with our building department and pull any applicable building electrical trades permits needed for your project.
I got you. Makes sense.
I, I don't see, I don't see a reason why, Brenda, we can't incorporate that into the language of a site plan approval.
We can give them a copy of the minutes. Generally, we try to do that, so they see that they have your approval. And if that language is in there, we can highlight it and say, you know, you need follow-up.
Sure.
So I appreciate that.
Fair enough. Okay. Well, with no other citizen comments, and no other comments from the board or the planner, I will ask for a motion for a chairman.
I'll make a motion to do it here.
Motion?
I'll second.
Motion and a second for a chairman at tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carry. Thank you.